It's 7:00 AM, Wednesday, February 13th, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to hold to order. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Is absent Fish?
Here.
Here.
Tommy and Luther Thompson?
Here.
Here.
We have a quorum, barely.
Yeah.
First item on the agenda is a discussion item pertaining to the number of pets allowed, and I'll call on Public Works Director Guy Taylor. Morning, Guy.
Morning, thank you, Your Honor. The action going to be requested today is to request or direct the city attorney to amend ordinance 6.26(c)(1). It's the number of dogs and cats allowed per residence. Background is a resident requested an increase in the number of animals, so we were directed to come up with a process to allow that. And what we've come up with is mirroring some aspects of what the chicken permitting process is. So we're within this process, the applicant would need to provide notice to adjacent residences, and then across the street also, that residence, a notice that they are intending to have up to four dogs on their property. And other requirements of the applicant would be that all animals in the residence would have to be licensed and vaccinated, and that there not be any dangerous animals on the property that have been previously declared dangerous by the city or some other municipality. We decided to just limit this to dogs. In talking with Jaclyn Keenan at the Humane Society, we felt that allowing an increased number of cats wouldn't be in the city's best interest, just in hearing from her about a cat issue that we have in the city. So we've got issues in certain areas of town that we now know that we have to address as far as feral cats, so it's limited just to dogs. The city can revoke this permit if what's presented is drafted into the ordinance, if there's certain complaints that have been lodged against the applicant, maltreatment, not providing water, food, shelter, shade, any of the conditions here that are noted. If there is a complaint lodged, then that permit would be revoked. That is a request. Be happy to answer any questions. Committee that, or not a committee, but staff that met with Jaclyn is Andrew, Steve Plaza, Dave Boomlove, and myself.
Thank you, Guy. Questions from the council? Now, do we have a question?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Bring this to the council. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Brent. Any further questions or discussion? If not, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Guy.
Thanks, Guy.
Item number two is the Aquatic Center Positioning Study Report, and I'll call on Bridget Leonard to introduce this topic. Morning, Bridget.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. It's my pleasure to introduce Kristi Ackley this morning. She is a project manager with Katrina Lynn, and the city hired Katrina Lynn Consulting to do a positioning study for us late 2018, and so she'll present her findings and some recommendations to you this morning. So, Kristi, go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. I just have handouts to give you. All right, so I have a presentation over here on the slideshow, or the projector over here on the screen. You guys want to take a look at that. Thank you, first of all, for having me here this morning. Glad we were able to get this rescheduled from last month when it was so cold, and now we have snow and ice. So, it's Minnesota, right? This morning, what I'm going to do is just kind of go over the positioning study, what we found. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. So what we found from that, I know that we have a short time here, so what I'm going to do is go kind of, some highlights about what we found, and then what our recommendations are, and then I'll open it up for questions. So to keep us kind of on track for that time, I'd ask you to hold your questions until I get through the presentation. I believe you have seen the full report at this point, so we're just going to kind of breeze through some of this stuff. Maybe. All right, so first of all, just to remind you on what the purpose of the positioning study is. It's really to help gather strategic advice, to help you establish a realistic dollar amount, surface any issues that might have come up, and then uncover prospective lead or major donors, plant the seed with some potential campaign volunteers, and to engage your community, foster excitement, and really get the, some ownership for this effort. We did this by providing the case that's in front of you to about 22 individuals, not about 22, there was 22 individuals. Some people might, no, I'm just kidding. We did this through 18 interviews with these 22 individuals, and we really asked them in three core areas. What was their perception of the city, especially parks and rec? What was their reaction to the project? And then how did they feel about the fundraising kind of goals, and whether they would be willing to support this? We also did two internal interviews, one with Ryan Miller, and then one with Rebecca Peterson, who is here today from West Central Initiative, as they may be your partner should you decide to go forward with this. All right, so, nope, you're good. The perceptions of the city and then the parks and recs was pretty positive. For the most part, participants felt like the amenities that you already have are very important, that they're well-maintained and well-used. There was some doubt as to whether they attract individuals. It was kind of a mixed reaction as to whether they attract individuals into your community or not. Some felt really strongly that this was something that was very important, while others were like, no, I don't know if people come here for that or not. They did have some concerns, though, that came up about just sustainability and being able to continue to maintain things. There was a couple specific instances that were raised where they said, you know, some outside entities had fundraised for you guys to do something in your parks, and then it wasn't able to be maintained. So there was just some concerns and some questions about past history there. Their reaction to the case, most are enthusiastic about some kind of aquatic amenity. And they were also agreed that adding amenities for young families was really important for your community. However, they were concerned about the limited use, about a lack of partnership with the Y, a lack of a competitive pool, and then just lots of questions on the overall plan for sustainability, for funding this, how you're going to staff it. Those kind of questions came up over and over and over again. The most attractive components they found were the water slide and the zero-entry pool. When we shifted to fundraising, about 53% felt that this was a realistic goal for the project that was presented to them, which is that case in front of you. Ideally, we like to see 75% for that number, to go forward with a really strong campaign. When asked about the likelihood of support, most of them said they would support, but it was very tentative, for the most part. There was a couple that were like, yes, absolutely, I will support it exactly the way it is. But that was very rare. And most of people were like, yes, I will support if this is what is the final decision on this project, because I care about my community, and because I can see that this would be an amenity. But it was really, really clear that if there were a couple tweaks to this, that you would, those same people that would support would support at a higher level, and those that were not sure they would support would support. So that's that slide, sorry. When we asked them about what level they thought they would support at, the range, when you kind of make the cumulative range of what those people would, and we gave them a pyramid that looks like this, and they just circled the amount. So it could have been, you know, in that 100 to 249 range. It could have been 100,000 they were talking about, or it could have been 250. So that's why you get such a drastic number range in your report. But it was somewhere between 281,000 and 690,000 was the total. I can tell you from being in the interviews, most people, when they circled an amount, they were at the lower end of that amount. So I think your self-identified is closer to that 290 range. I would say you could pretty safely estimate about 350 to 400,000. Okay? I'm not going to go through the entire SWOT observations for you, I just want to highlight really the opportunities here. The opportunities for you of this project are abundant. I mean, there's just a lot of opportunities on this. Based on our research, Fergus Falls definitely has the ability to raise this kind of money. You guys have citizens who are really passionate about your community and want to do great things for your community. There's not any other major campaigns going on right now, so as far as a timing, that's good. You have really strong community leaders, and there's just this really strong sense of community across all the people that we interviewed. It gives your city the opportunity to show that you're forward-thinking, and thinking about the fact that a lot of younger families, the job market is shifting significantly across this country, and there's a lot more jobs that are virtual, where people can live anywhere, and they're working, you know, for a company out of New York or California. So to have amenities in your community that are really attractive to those types of families is important, and this gives you that opportunity to attract those people and show those people that you are forward-thinking. It can help revitalize that kind of contentious Kirk-Bride location that you guys have got going here, and if the plan is revised, there's a strong opportunity for a partner with the competitive swim community. So based on these observations, this is what we recommend. We recommend that you first start with a community engagement process. There were so many concerns and questions that were raised, that it was really clear your community's not quite ready for you to ask them for money yet. They need to understand a little bit more about the project. There's an opportunity for some additional focus groups, and to kind of look at the project and say, are there some tweaks, like the competitive pool, that we can make to make this be more accepted across your community? It was also really clear that people were not real comfortable with giving until they understood where the sales tax stood. And so this community engagement phase could really set you up for that vote, help garner the support that you need, get that vote done, and then launch into a capital campaign. So your first step is the internal steps, thanking those people that were there, engaging in some strategic discussion. I know that the aquatics committee is going to do next, and then really decide to do that community engagement phase, and make sure that they've got the, what they need to do to get that moving forward. After that, you would start the community engagement phase, which we think will take about six to nine months, depending on when you could get that vote up, and just really how committed the volunteers can be to getting this done. After the community engagement phase, then you would finally go into your capital campaign, which would be about 18 to 24 months. And I just want to say, 18 to 24 months is a pretty aggressive timeline for a campaign of about 3 million. And that's about where we felt like you guys could hit, was that 3 million range, once you've done the community engagement phase and got some more support. All right, any questions? I know you have questions, so what are your questions? I did so well that you guys have no questions, or are you just too tired and haven't had your coffee yet?
Could you go back to the slide with the big arrow showing the various project steps? That one there?
Yep. Yep, so what this shows is the community engagement process, that's that first six to nine months. And then the rest of those steps are your normal capital campaign phases. So within that 18 to 24 months, you're going to have your time for planning and kind of setting the stage, then you're going to go into that silent phase where you're asking for your major gifts. And it's not until you've raised about 50% of your goal that you do the public phase. So that's what this nice little chart is kind of laying out for you, is those steps within that phase. And in our report, you know, we've outlined this in great detail as to what we're recommending within each of those phases, and the recommendations for the committee.
Can you talk more about the feedback you got regarding partnerships, specifically with the YMCA? I know they're well-represented in the audience today, and as I read through the report, that was a common theme that I kept picking up on, is the need to have partnerships and collaboration on the project. Can you give us more insight as to the context that those conversations were had?
Sure. Yeah, there was, just about every person that we interviewed asked about, has the Y been brought into this process? You know, doesn't it make more sense to partner with the Y? There's clearly a lot of support in your community for the Y, and they wanted to make sure that they weren't having their toes stepped on. There was quite a few conversations prior to us doing this positioning study with the Y. They've been, my understanding is they've been part of this process all along the way. So what we were able to share with those individuals, during the interview process, we're trying not to change their mind. That's not what we're there for. So we didn't give them a lot of information on that during the process, but we did say, yes, the Y has been part of these conversations in the past, they've been at the table, and that because it's an outdoor aquatic center, that this is the way it's going forward at this point. And we just really wanted to focus on what was presented in front of them, so.
Nice. Maybe add a little bit to that is, excuse me, you know, from the two-plus years ago when we started this, the Y has been engaged in, so was the school district, and then at some point along that path, they kind of self-selected themselves off the planning, if you will. And we do have a new director at the Y, and so I think it's imperative to kind of re-engage, and we've heard that through these comments, that to re-engage those partnerships. But I think too, part of that community engagement and education, you know, a lot of folks that came up in the interviews, and she had stated they didn't really correct them, which is good, but we just need to educate the folks that have the questions of who we've actually engaged in the process two-plus years ago, and, you know. So I think that's, you know, the direction of the committee that we've got from this feedback is just to kind of take a halt and kind of step back and re-partner with the groups that are stakeholders in this, with the community, and educate, and kind of revitalize and move forward, so.
Yeah, I would say that I'm definitely encouraged by the results, because, you know, what I have heard, I've heard kind of exactly what you've said, is, you know, pretty much everyone I've talked to has said, yes, it's very important that we do something like this, you know, how is the Y going to be involved? And so I think stepping back and recognizing the years of hard work that the current committee has put into it, and appreciating that, it just seems that we need to make sure that everybody's on board, so that we have. We don't want to settle for a project that's just good enough, you know, that's just what we kind of need right now. We want to do everything that we can. I mean, we want to, you know, shoot for the moon and get all the money from all the sources everywhere that we can find, and make it something that we're really going to be proud of for a long time, and that the whole community is engaged in. So I'm looking forward to participating in the process that you've laid out, so, thanks.
Anything else? We have a lot to discuss on this.
I just add, I think the committee will be meeting at a tentative date after this meeting, and then hopefully come back with next steps for us, and then get direction from the council if that's applicable and meaningful. So just, this will come back before us, just to give the committee direction.
Sure. I just have one question on the 22 individuals that participated in the, obviously they weren't random, but they were, they represented a spectrum of the community, or can you just touch on that a little bit?
Yep, sure. So we asked the committee to look at business owners, other donors to past projects, community leaders, community influencers, and kind of go through and select
Sure.
those individuals. And then we invited them to the interviews. So it was a really nice cross-section, a variety. You had a state representative on there, you had business owners, yeah. It was a great group. It was really, really, I seriously, it was really fun to be here in your guys' community and interview all of the individuals. Even those that were not on board with the project were still obviously very passionate about your community. So you have some really great leaders here.
Brent?
Yeah, I'm in favor with moving forward with the engagement process. The one thing that I am looking forward, the same thing that Mrs. Spada was looking forward, is when we're designing this, to make sure that we leave the option open, if this becomes as successful as we hope it will become, to be able to expand possibly into a seasonal indoor facility on the same location, if the, you know, option were to arise for that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a business subsidy agreement, and I will call on our finance director, Bill Sonmore. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, thank you, Your Honor. In your packet is a request for you to approve a business subsidy agreement with Alt Properties. They have been remodeling and freshening up the block up North Union. The old gas station up there is now gone, so you've seen those improvements, and it's looking quite nice up there. We have, the city of Fergus Falls has three different loan funds that get rolled into one revolving loan fund. This is from one component of that loan fund. They do the smaller loans, it's through Business Development of Fergus Falls. And so before you, you have an $80,000 loan that has been made, and in further research, as we look back through that, we should have a business subsidy agreement in place for this. We don't have to have a public hearing, but we do need a business subsidy agreement. Business subsidies are if you give a grant to a business of $25,000 or more, but it's also a loan. If you give a loan at below-market rates of $75,000 or more, that's what triggers a business subsidy agreement. If the loan were to be 150,000 or more, we have to come before you with a public hearing, actually, at a council meeting. But since we're at 80,000, it's just a business subsidy agreement, and this should have been in place prior to issuing these. These go out in phases, but under further research, we see we do need this, so we're asking you for that today. Let's see, they do have another small loan separate from this of 34,300, but the balance of the project is private financing for this project, so that's good as well. So basically, the request is to approve this business subsidy agreement. We are setting wage goals, we're not having wage goals in there, and we're not, as far as adding employees, not putting those goals in there, and you are allowed to set those goals at zero. But within that business subsidy agreement is that you will stay in business for five years. If for some reason you didn't, or left the city, you would need to repay those funds back to the city of Fergus Falls. This is determined to be a public purpose, because it is cleaning up that blight of that block, and increasing the tax base would be the public purpose behind it.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions? Tom?
So what's, sorry if I missed it, what's the scope of the project? What all are they planning to do there?
Would you like to share, Michael? From the HRA, HRA does the intake for these loans for Business Development of Fergus Falls, so he has a little more information on that side of it.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning, Michael.
The total scope of the project, so right now, the office building has been pretty well-modelled, and there was a vacant building attached to that. The longer-term goal is to remodel that into an event center of sorts. It'll be primarily used by the business or clients of the business. And the demolition of the old station really facilitates additional parking areas for the use of that office and event center space.
Okay.
Additionally, there's a permit in place, or a request in place, for signage, so it's a very large monument-style lighted sign to, you know, advertise the business there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would offer that.
Thank you, Jim. I'll bring this to the council on Monday. Thank you, Krista. Further discussion? In favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we forgot to take connection on the Aquatic Center. Can we backtrack this a little bit?
Sure. So we got the business subsidy, I'll go on the consent agenda. On item number two, we just need a recommendation to approve the Aquatic Center Positioning Study, and proceed with the next three steps with the committee. Is that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Brent.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Caroline. In favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
For keeping us on track.
Right.
All right. Item number four is a Loan Review Board Agreement, and again, I will call on Bill Sonmore. And Andrew Brumford.
I'll take it.
You go first.
So based on, Your Honor, members, thank you, based on the conversation we just had regarding the business subsidy amounts, we're also looking at putting a new agreement in place between Business Development for Fergus Falls, which is the former EIC board. It's got a new name, Business Development for, rather than Business Development of Fergus Falls, not to confuse anyone, but we've kind of blended the two boards, taking a few members from the EIC and a handful of members from Business Development of Fergus Falls, creating this new board, as we've talked about previously, that will be the one-stop-shop for our loan review programs, and they'll have three additional loan funds that the city currently oversees, added under their umbrella, so to speak. So in the next couple of weeks, you'll see recommendations come before you from city staff, putting parameters in place with that new agreement. And what we've talked about is putting the limits at where those business subsidy agreements come into play, like Bill just talked about, $75,000, because those things will have to come before the city council anyway, so we might as well give them the ability to approve loans up to that amount, and anything over that amount would have to come here and would require council approval. So you'll see that in the coming days, but in the meantime, the existing agreement goes through the end of March. We extended that at the end of the year, and that agreement is in place with Business Development of Fergus Falls, which is no longer a whole board, so to speak. So what we're asking today is to assign that agreement to Business Development for Fergus Falls, so of to for, and that would just be a real short-term assignment. It expires in March, and in the meantime, we'll work on the new agreement, which would then take place of this old agreement that we're assigning to the new group. And the importance of assigning it now rather than waiting till the end of March is that the Loan Review Board is in place, but they don't have the ability to approve loans, because we don't have the service agreement in place. So if there were loans to come forward between now and the end of March, they would be kind of in limbo and just on hold. So assigning the agreement will allow them to continue to approve loans and work with prospects and developers in the meantime, as we work on that new agreement that we'll have in place here by the end of March. So that's really what we're asking for, is the council to grant the assignment of that agreement to Business Development for Fergus Falls. That board met last week, and they voted to accept the assignment if the city were to put it in that direction, so that's what we're looking for. I hope that's not confusing. The names certainly are confusing.
Certainly is.
I'd answer any questions you may have if I could clarify.
I'm more confused than I was two minutes ago.
Is it the same, it's about the same board?
It's not.
Totally different.
So Business Development of Fergus Falls has been around for a long time, and that's who's been doing the loan review. Then they decided they wanted to use the EIC umbrella, because they had a different nonprofit status, so the EIC board has changed their name to Business Development for Fergus Falls. Real similar, obviously, one word difference, and they brought on, half the board left, and they brought on half of the board from Business Development of Fergus Falls. So now it's a blended board between the former EIC members and the former Business Development of Fergus Falls, which is now called Business Development. of Fergus Falls, which is now called Business Development for Fergus Falls. I don't know who came up with these names. It wasn't me. I'm not taking credit. But, so it is a new board, has new makeup, new composition, and all the agreements, you know, within the next two months are going to be brand-new and specific to the new board.
Thank you.
You actually did a very good job of confusing us.
Would you repeat that?
I'll make that, make that right.
Thank you, Justin. Do you have a second? Tom, is there any other questions or, does everyone understand the, what's going, basically what's going on?
Bill, do you want to take a crack at it?
You are good.
Well, if you have any questions, which is not Monday, we can certainly answer those then as well. So we have a motion to bring this to the full council. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Andrew. Item number five is a discussion on ordinance revision, and I'll call on Jason Schutzley.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Hope you're all doing well. What we're proposing is a recommendation to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance to require a survey and property monument location prior to commercial construction. And the background of that is, is we don't have anything that requires a pin location or defined property line prior to construction of a commercial building. So we really are leaning on them to tell us that this is their actual property line. If we can get it professionally done, we can prevent encroachment, which we've had some issues with in the past.
That's an understatement. No, in all seriousness, this comes from, you know, in reaction to an incident that happened that caused a lot of trouble, to say the least. That being said, does this, is, is, do other communities, is this, this isn't a burden on a developer that's different than other communities?
No, most of our, our developers and construction companies in the commercial, they do it.
Sure.
It's, our smaller guys who are just starting, they just, they don't, they don't go through that process.
Sure. But it's reasonable to ask.
It is very reasonable, it is.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Jason.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Second that.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion, questions? Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Jason for your work on this and just continue to encourage you to keep looking for ways that we can streamline the process of development and make sure that everybody's following the same rules and, and they're clearly laid out in the processes. We'll facilitate development that's going to work for everybody. So keep it up. Thanks.
Engineering has a huge part in this, too. Work very closely with them there. They're very knowledgeable on it as well.
Sure, thank you, Tom, for that. Well said.
Thank you.
I would agree wholeheartedly. And that's what I hear from developers, both to all the city staff, but to your building department and Brian, engineering, that working with these developers to make sure that we can continue to have them work in our communities is important, and those partnerships that we're building. Scott, did you have a question or comment?
Is there an average cost, a typical cost that a developer or that a contractor would be looking to face in a situation like this?
I don't have any numbers on it. I know it's not a huge, a huge burden, you know, cost burden can be from a couple hundred to a couple thousand, depending on what they do or how big the project is. If they got to do a whole survey, it could be a few thousand. But I don't have any hard numbers on that.
Other questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Item number six is Public Improvement 8221, which is a reservoir rehab project. City engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, Your Honor and members of the council. Before you, as in regards to one and a half million gallon ground storage reservoir that we use for part of one component of our water storage system. Recently, we had a consultant do a site inspection of all of these storage facilities associated with our distribution system. Two in particular are located near the water treatment plant, and one in particular, the 750,000 gallon storage, is, is close to the end of its useful life. It was constructed in 1914. There were a lot of ACI, American Concrete Institute standards that were adhered without or governed, that type of project. That particular structure is exhibiting a lot of permanent yielding, steel and everything. It's beyond repairable. The other storage is a million and a half gallon groundwater storage, just located adjacent to it. That was constructed in 1956. That one, we conclude that that one is, needs some repair, and, but it is repairable. So what I'm requesting is that we consider the rehabilitation for this reservoir number two, and then we evaluate options for this reservoir number one. Reservoir number one is the one that will eventually be condemned. Recommending this, I have a professional services agreement from Interstate Engineering, but in part, there's a lot of things that have changed since 1914, its initial construction. I think it's very due diligence if we're going to...
Another understatement.
I think, you know, at the price tag and everything like that, we have, the city has expanded over the years, and I think it's well worth, I say, we address this reservoir number two, but we also will be talking to our specialists, too, see if we can find perhaps another feasible way to address this reservoir one, perhaps a different location, if feasible. It's something we need to evaluate, and I think it's worth doing so. I just provide some other informational, so working with Bill, man, we'll get them at CIP for maintenance of our elevated storage tanks. But at this time, requesting initiate Public Improvement 8211, a million and a half gallon ground storage reservoir rehabilitation project, and accept Interstate Engineering's professional services proposal for design in the amount of $23,500.
Thank you, Brian. Is there any questions? I'll allow for that, John. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Caroline. Further discussion, questions? All in favor of bringing that to the council, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, that motion carries. I believe that can be on the, we haven't really talked about, but Lynn will figure that out for us. Last item on the agenda is a Public Improvement 5321, which is College Way Street Improvement.
Yes, thank you again. Recently, the Bike and Pedestrian Committee requested evaluation for additional bike lane facilities, perhaps, that we're thinking on College Way project. If you recall, College Way is a resurfacing project. There is going to be some excavation in some localized areas along this corridor. This project extends from Western to Tower Road. So we do have time. We anticipate this project will be completed here in early spring. But since we have time, we reviewed the current geometrics of this, this segment. I, I have included an existing typical section to facilitate any type of, we're thinking bike lanes on this project, generally located at the shoulders. We have an area of Western, from Western to Park Roads, where it's a very rural section road. Anybody that's traveled back can see it's kind of somewhat narrow. The new construction, we made some modifications, and that's already in the base contract, and I provided a typical section for that. And we're showing that these shoulders, existing shoulders that vary from three to four feet, we're going to streamline those and make those a consistent six-foot. So we feel that could facilitate some type of bike lanes along this corridor that's associated with this project. Being this, I think it could be very minimal, but Interstate Engineering, who does have the contract for this, they provided amendment to their design for these bike lane facilities, evaluation, and if acceptable, I think we'll provide a final recommendation. But this could really be done, I think, with some additional striping. There's no parking affected along this corridor. So at this time, I'm requesting accept Interstate Engineering's professional services amendment for design in the amount of $5,000 for the College Way Street Improvement Project, State Aid Project 126124002.
Thank you, Brian. Questions?
All in for that, Your Honor?
Tom, thank you. For a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Questions? Comments? Go bikes? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Do you have any additional agenda items?
I would like to mention one thing, if I could.
Please.
Your Honor, members, we've received a lot of commentary over the last couple of days regarding snow removal and how streets are becoming more and more narrow and how piles are becoming higher. And I'm wondering if we couldn't give the Public Works Director an opportunity to just reassure everybody that, what our process is and what's coming and how we're trying to get ahead of all of that, with some friendly reminders to move vehicles to facilitate that process.
Yeah, thanks, Andrew. I'd be glad to. It was timely to see the crews going through here as a good exhibit of what's going on. What we plan to do is basically that, that snow removal process, we do that in the downtown corridor numerous times a year. It's already been done, I think, eight times this year. But what we plan to do is start running 16 hours a day and going through the residential areas, pulling snow off of the boulevards, and then blowing the snow into trucks and hauling it to various dump sites. The residents can be assured that it will be taken care of throughout the city and their neighborhoods. They just need to be patient. And we would ask and encourage people to get their cars off the streets if at all possible.
Do you, are you, I assume you're going to post those so people will know when when not to park on the streets in that particular...
We will post them, yeah, as required by the ordinance. And then we're fortunate, Shannon's getting it out on the police department's Facebook, Lynn's getting it out on the city's Facebook, I'm doing it on the Public Works Facebook, so it's getting out there. And we are towing a few, but not as many as we typically would if we hadn't gotten that word out.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Guy, for that update. Any questions or comments? Thanks, Guy. Just a few miscellaneous announcements. Next Monday, the offices, facilities are closed for President's Day, so the city council meeting next week is Tuesday, February 19th. And then the following Monday, February 25th, is a joint meeting with the Heritage Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission, Planning Commission and the city council, right here in the city hall chambers at 4th and 3rd. So make sure we have that on our calendars. Public's invited to that, of course. And then on February 27th is the media poll. Any other announcements? Lynn, do you have anything? Not for a jerk.